Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December the 3rd to order. Roll call.
Yeah.
Say look next. Ah, Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yes.
Shobloom.
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here.
All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting tonight. Glad to see you all here. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda as submitted.
So moved.
All second.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Moves us on to item five this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wanting to speak to anything not on the agenda this evening? If not, we will move on to item six, which is a presentation for Citizen Recognition Awards by Chief McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the Council recall, one of the things that, forgive me, one of the things that, you know, I did shortly after becoming chief in Cannon Falls was implement a recognition program so that we could recognize our staff and our citizens for their actions that, you know, sort of go above just what we normally would expect, especially from our employees. And tonight, I'm very pleased to have two presentations for the council. One is for a citizen and one is for the officer, or an officer. And the council received a briefing in their packet, but for those people who may be watching at home, they wouldn't have had the opportunity to review this. So, this evening, for the Citizen's Award, we're going to recognize Eufemio Sidillo, Sidillo. I probably got it wrong, but he was very gracious to bear with me while I was trying to figure it out. But let me tell you what happened. On July 30th of 2012, or correction, 2013, at approximately 3:16 PM, Officer Mike Ayers was dispatched to report of a child drowning near the Third Street Bridge. As Officer Ayers approached the area, he observed two males waving for him near the sewer bridge. The males, who stated their father had jumped in the water to help a child who was in distress. At that time, Officer Ayers was under the impression that the father who jumped in the water was the father of the child who was in distress. The males took off running down the shoreline, and Officer Ayers followed them down to the bank of the river. At that time, Officer Ayers observed an older male who was all wet. The younger males stated that this was their father who had jumped in the river. Officer Ayers tried speaking to the father, but there was a language barrier. One of the younger males translated and advised they were not related to the child who was drowning. They did not know who the child was that was drowning, and their father had jumped in the water and assisted the child and put him in a raft of an unknown person who were passing by. They stated that the raft was floating down the river and came over to help while the child was struggling in the water. While exiting the woods and updating dispatch that no persons were still in the water, Officer Ayers was approached by a group of individuals walking out of the Riverside Terrace area. They stated that the child had been put into their raft. Officer Ayers checked on the child and had the Cannon Falls ambulance come to his location. Officer Ayers thanked the individuals of the raft and let them go on their way. The child did not appear to have any labored breathing, but appeared very shaken up from the incident. The Cannon Falls ambulance staff arrived, and they started to check out the child. Child's father was contacted and advised of the incident with his son. The father advised the family would be en route to the hospital and that he would like him transported there for further care. Officer Ayers spoke briefly with the child about what had happened. The child stated he was with approximately 15 other people, of which four of them were adults. Child stated he was on a personal tube that had not been rented, but rather someone had provided with him, provided to him, and he was not wearing a life preserver. Stated he began to get separated from the parties that he was with, and when he was going through the rapids, he got hung up on some trees, which had then caused him to fall off the tube. He tried to grab onto the trees and to hold himself out of the water, but the water current kept pushing him. Stated that that's when a man, Mr. Sidillo, jumped in and floated down the river from where he had been fishing and assisted him in holding his head above the water. A raft approached them, and the man put him into the raft. Stated that the persons on the raft had given him a life jacket until they could get to shore where they located Officer Ayers. The Cannon Falls ambulance transported the child to the Mayo Clinic Health Systems of Cannon Falls, and when Officer Ayers arrived at the hospital, the staff was getting vitals and conducting patient care. Hospital staff advised everything was looking good and the child to be in good spirits and in good health. It was because of the immediate and selfless actions by Eufemio Sidillo, who jumped into the river to save a drowning child, that that child is here today. The Cannon Falls Police Department is honored to present Eufemio Sidillo with its Citizen's Recognition Award. I'd ask him to come up at this time so we can present him with it. And I'm going to hold it so the interpreter can translate for me, but it says Cannon Falls Police Department, Citizen Recognition Award, presented to Eufemio Sidillo in appreciation for your heroic actions. On July 20th, 2013, you jumped into the Cannon River to rescue a child in distress without concern for your own safety and saved the child from drowning. It's my pleasure to present you with that. Thank you very much. And as I mentioned, I also want to recognize an officer. Presenting with us this evening is Officer Joel Berg. And in Joe's case, I'm presenting with a letter of commendation, and that was from an incident in March of 2013. At approximately 11:28 AM, Officer Joseph Berg responded to assist the Goodhue County Sheriff's Office with a suicidal male. Officer Berg knew that weapons were present at the residence and took a position that would provide not only cover, but concealment. The male had advised family that he had a loaded gun and wanted to use it. Officer Berg attempted to make contact with the male at both the home and cellphone numbers, but no one answered. Officer Berg then used the public address speaker of the squad to attempt to make contact with the male. Dispatch advised they had spoken to the male, who did not believe it was Officer Berg because he could not see any of the officers. Officer Berg then moved his squad car from a position of cover and concealment and parked it in plain view of the residence. Officer Berg left the squad car and moved back to a position of cover. The male, once knowing that Officer Berg was there, was able to be convinced to leave the residence by a negotiator who was able to get him to, able to reach him by phone. The male exited the residence without any weapons. Officer Berg quickly approached him and took him into custody and transferred him to the ambulance for treatment. In that instance, Officer Berg demonstrated his ability to consider alternatives to the situation and recognize appropriate action to be taken. It is for those actions that the Cannon Falls Police Department recognizes you and for which I am very proud to present you with a letter of commendation. A copy of the letter will be placed in your Cannon Falls personnel file. And if Officer Berg could come up? Joseph, my honor to present you with this letter of commendation, contents of which are essentially what I read. For the council, Officer Berg has been with us for well over 10 years. How many years are you up to now?
Thirteen total.
Thirteen. He's an example of, you know, the officers that we have. I'm very proud to have him serving on our agency and our citizens, and I just want the council to be aware that this is just an example of the work that Joseph does day in and day out. This was just one that I thought was definitely worthy of making the council aware of, you know, his ability to recognize and consider alternatives and get a fast resolution to a potentially dangerous situation. So, thank you very much for your office time.
Thank you, Chief. And I'd just like to say to both individuals, thank you because of the job you do, Officer Berg, that helps keep our community safe, and for Mr. Sidillo, thank you very much for putting your own life at risk to ensure the safety of another human being. It takes a special person to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me get everything back up here. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to public hearings. Resolution 2047, Vacating Part of Oak Street North.
We had a request from the adjacent property owners on Oak Street, and you can get a better idea of where it's at on the map, but they had requested that we vacate the right-of-way adjacent to their property. They basically use it now, they would like to just be able to officially fence it off, do some landscaping, things like that. We don't use it, we have no plans to use it. We actually have a lot of right-of-way in the city that we can probably vacate, and we've been working on that. It's not been a very high priority project, but it's something we've been reviewing. And so, at this time, we usually just take them as they come, and if people request it, we'll take a look and see. And, you know, in this situation, it really is, it doesn't do us any good to hold it. It would be better off to turn it back over, get on tax rolls, and allow the neighboring property owners to use it. So, we recommend that we go ahead and approve the vacation.
Is there any discussion?
Aaron, just a quick question. Are we going to keep a, oh, what's the right word?
Utility easements?
Utility easements.
I always have the right for the utility easements. Those remain.
Because I can see a couple of years from now, somebody want to put six houses up on top of that hill, and all of a sudden, we need to tie it back in and loop the water or something. So, we will have that option, right?
Yep, we always have the option to run if we need to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the resolution, vacating a portion of Oak Street North as presented.
Can we just, sorry, can we get this in case somebody actually wants to talk?
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick public and see if anybody's interested.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Well, we better do that. Okay, this time, we'll open up the, open it up to the public for a public hearing for the vacation, if anybody wishes to speak on this. Seeing as there is no one that wishes to speak, Chair will take a motion to approve res- at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 24, 2047, Vacating Part of the Oak Street North.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aries. This moves us on to item eight this evening, which is the Consent Agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is Adjusting Correct Claims for Accounting Period Ending November the 27th, 2013. Item B is the Meeting Minutes for the November 19th, 2013 City Council Meeting. Item C, Meeting Minutes for the November 19th, 2013 City Council Work Session. Item D is Resolution 2048, Authorizing an EAID Grant Application. Item E is to approve Diane White to Practice Massage in the City Limits. And item F is to hire EMS applicants for the ambulance service. Are there any that anyone wishes to bring down? Seeing as there are none, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I will second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda is approved. This time, we'll move on to item nine, Council Business this evening, and the first one is Resolution 2049, Ordering a Special Election on the Question of Issuing General Obligation Bonds.
Yep, I mean, basically, we're talking about the potential for new slash remodeled pool. As I mentioned in the memorandum, the committee met a number of times, they went through all the various options, they narrowed it down to a recommendation. The cost is roughly a little under $4 million per what the estimate is to be safe, as we've seen with bids sometimes. I do recommend that we add some cushion in there. All that means is that if the bids come in higher, if we move the project forward, and it goes out, and we get the referendum approved, and it goes out for bids and they come in higher, we have some, we have some room to work with then, and we're not stuck with a chunk that we need to come up with that we weren't expecting. But basically, what we'll do tonight is, one, we'll get a presentation from US Aquatics about the study and what was determined to be the recommendation from the pool committee. From there, if the council wishes to move it forward, we would pass the resolution that's on the agenda, which would call for a special election, which would be Mar- March 3rd, and we'll have the special election, and then after that, depending how that goes, we would be able to move forward with time to do the bidding, construction, and only lose one season at the pool. So that's why we kind of have a tight timeframe, is that the sooner that we can get the process going, the ability than we have just to lose one season instead of going into two. So, that's where it's at right now. I believe we have a representative from US Aquatics here.
Aaron, can you explain right quick to the people at home about the reason why we're doing this?
Right.
And why we need to replace the pool?
Yep, yeah, I mean, the one reason we started looking at this is that, looking at our capital plan, I mean, we have, just in general maintenance sort of things, almost $200,000 worth of potential work that we'll be doing, that we would be doing over the next couple of years, and that's just some ceiling, that's some parking lot work, some really, you know, basic things that doesn't improve the pool at all. It just keeps the pool up and running the way it is. If we actually start taking a look at some of the major issues, which I think will be touched on in the, in the study that was reviewed, it's actually a lot more than that. So, I mean, we're really now at the point where the cost to keep, maintain the pool the way it is, is such a high price that, you know, the alternative is definitely looking at something new, which is what you're seeing really across southeast Minnesota. Caston just approved, and has their, they approved theirs and have their open now, it's very nice. Byron's going through the same process we are, they have a crack in their pool, it was going to cost them a fairly decent amount of money to fix, so instead, they decided to go through the study process like we are. So you're seeing a lot of cities looking at this and considering it, you know, especially with the, you know, with the fact that really, none of the pools that are, you know, older than 10 years old are ADA compliant anymore. And it's, in our case, it's impossible to make it ADA compliant the way it is. We can't get anybody from the parking lot to the pool, and so that's, that would be addressed with this process. So, yeah, there's, there's a definite need to take a look at what our options are, and if the council approves moving it forward, we would have a series of informational meetings for the public where we'd lay out what the study found as far as the work that needs to be done with the pool, how much that would cost versus what the cost is for a new pool, what those potential impacts could be. We would also have time, you know, once we know for sure if we're moving forward with it or not, we'll get the city engineer to kind of take a look at the estimates, kind of refine them, make sure they're pretty close, and then we can have our financial advisors, who are also here tonight, can give us some tax impact runs on how it would affect property owners, you know, residential, commercial, those sort of things. So when we have public meetings, we can present all the information out there, and the biggest thing is, is this allows the public to vote and to decide, do we want to move forward this way, do we want to stay with what we have? And we can work with it either way, but, you know, in these situations, before you spend so much money on what's there, I think it's best to try to, you know, just to look and see what other options are and see where the public feels, you know, we should move forward with the pool. So that's where we are right now.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. I'm Tom Schaefer with US Aquatics, and Mayor and Council Members, I am pleased to be here tonight to, on behalf of the Cannon Falls Pool Committee, to present the summary of the study that they worked so hard on over the last few months. So, with that, I'll get right into it. We did go through a methodological process to, for the pool committee to go through this study and make some good decisions. They were a very, very good committee to work with. They were very good at making decisions and raising consensus within the committee, so we were able to move forward fairly fast with the study. This is the existing pool, so we know where the location is and the setting of it, and as Aaron mentioned, one of the great difficulties we have with the facility as it is, is that with the parking lot being so low and steps going up to the bathhouse, it's nearly impossible to bring this to federal mandates for ADA compliance. They did get an estimate from the city engineer a while ago, and he thought to raise the parking lot and make just the bathhouse ADA accessible might approach $300,000, and that wouldn't even make the pool ADA accessible at that price tag. So, we went through that. We looked at the pool structure very closely. There's a lot of issues with, in reference to the Minnesota Health Department Code, one of them being that the risers, the steps are higher than they should be, and staff reported that there's quite a bit of difficulty with either young children or elderly people using the facility, they have to be helped in and out because the stairs aren't really very That lower left-hand photo, probably can't see it too well, but there's, that corner is structurally unsound, that the section of the wall is actually starting to fail and is very much heaving and pushing in. So we don't know how long the structural integrity of the shell is going to last. There's a, there's a lot of bulging in the concrete, which means that that concrete has failed and is delaminating, is probably separating away from the reinforcing steel. Water gets back there and it oxidizes or rusts out the reinforcing steel. That's why we're seeing the structural damage that we see on the facility. In the equipment room, many of the valves don't work well, a lot of the equipment is wearing out, it's at the end of its life cycle. The heater for the splash pad doesn't even work anymore. There's two heaters for the big pool, one of them doesn't work, the other one works intermittently. So there's a lot of repair, a lot of expensive operation with the existing facility. We did go through a demographic study for the Cannon Falls area, and when we noticed the largest percentage of the population in the age groups, there is, there's a strong population in the 45 and older, and there's also a heavy population of really of people with young families that use these facilities. So, the current amenities that you have at the existing pool don't meet all of the needs for the, for the demographics that you have in the community. We looked at, with the pool committee, we looked at your primary service area being Cannon Falls. We also looked at the secondary service area, which is in the report, isn't on here, but it shows a 30-mile radius of Cannon Falls and identifies what other aquatic venues are within that. So, the other thing that we worked with the pool committee on, and the pool committee was very good at doing this, was to make sure that recommendations for aquatic amenities here would not really compete with other pools in the area. So they wanted something a little bit different. One, to serve the primary area, which is the citizens, and two, so that there were amenities that were different than aquatic facilities in the neighborhood. So, again, we went through with the pool committee various comparable facilities so that they could make informed judgments about what amenities that they would have and what kind of a conceptual plan that there would be for the proposed facility. So, we looked at various bathhouses, we looked at multipurpose use pools with lap areas, we looked at zero water depth entries, which also act as ramps for ADA compliance. I looked at shade opportunity, there's no shade at the existing facility, and when you do a newer facility like this and draw patrons, they're going to, their retention time at the facility is a lot longer. So, you do want to provide shade, and you do want to provide concessions for them. We found out through, historically, that concessions can bring anywhere from 20% to 30% of your revenue can come off of concessions if they're done right. We looked at other amenities like water slides and drop slides, one-meter diving and three-meter diving, looked at those amenities. We looked at aquatic climbing walls as an option. In the zero-depth entry area, we looked at ground sprays and pop jets. We looked at family slides in the shallow water, and then we looked at other interactive aquatic amenities that we could put in that splash water depth area. Silly Serpent and Supersplash and the Waterfort are items that the pool committee selected. The other thing is, when we went through the budget process on it, the pool committee did decide to put a lot of the play amenities in a column that we call alternate, so that there's really a base bid project that you have, and then some of these things can be done as alternates, or done as fundraisers, or done as sponsorships by corporations. So the committee decided to put them in that column. You also see in that budget estimate on the far right side that there are some other items that could be done with other funds in the city, like a street improvement project or something of that, having to deal with the parking lot, the entrance to the facility. So, that range on that budget, we'll get to a little bit later. Pool committee, working with them, they really came down to two concepts. One of the things that we talked about early on is whether we should have one body of water or two bodies of water in the facility, and after the pool committee looked at very other comparisons or comparable facilities, they did decide that they wanted a two-pool option. So, working with them, we came up with Concept A and Concept B. Then what the pool committee did was they, they took the best out of both concepts to do a hybrid final concept design, and this is what the hybrid or the final design that the pool committee chose. You can see that the pool, the body of water on the left is a multi-use pool, which does have six lap lanes that are 25 yard long. There are ADA ingress and egress stairs. This would also come with a poolside lift for ADA compliance. This body of water also has a diving L on it, which would have aqua climbing wall, drop slide, and one-meter diving board. The pool committee did decide not to go with the three-meter diving board for a couple of reasons. The pool would have to be two feet deeper to accommodate that diving, a three-meter diving board, and it makes the diving well six feet longer to get that runout up into the shallow area. So, they decided to save a little money on that, and it wasn't a strong need or want for a three-meter board. The other L on that is a dedicated plunge area for the two water slides. One of the water slides would be an enclosed tube slide, the other one would be an open flume slide, very different ride experiences, so they did choose that. That plunge pool, too, when the slides aren't working, is excellent water depth for aqua-aerobics and lessons, so it is a multi-use area as well. The body of water on the right is a zero-water-depth entry, and then it goes down to two feet in water depth, and that's where they have the interactive play elements and a seating area for parents with smaller children. It has the family slide on it, and it has the zero-depth entry that acts, that will comply with the ADA zero-depth entry that acts, that will comply with the ADA entrance laws. The other thing that the pool committee wanted was a covered seating area off of the concessions, which is that, kind of that arrow-shaped piece off of the building. And then at the 45-degree angle, there are four shaded areas, which are kind of like cabanas that could be rented out for parties. So you could have one big corporate party and rent that whole thing out, or you could have four individual parties for a birthday party as a revenue source. And then we provided plenty of shade structures in that. Pool committee also wanted a dry play area, which is in the lower right-hand corner. So that would be a tot lot with some dry play elements in there. And then they wanted some softscaping within the fence so that there wasn't just concrete and fence. So there is some softscaping areas within that as well. They didn't want real grass in there because of maintenance issues. So that will either be synthetic turf, or it'll be a mulch-type area, rubber mulch, not wood mulch, in those areas. But those are softscape areas that will be defined in further design stages. Any questions on this so far? This is how the project would, or the concept would lay out on the existing site. The pool committee, working with them, the other reason that they didn't want to go with the three-meter board is talking to Tom, is that we felt if we got much deeper than what we were existing, that we'd hit granite. And so we chose, the pool committee chose not to do that. The other thing is that this is really a major renovation and not a completely new project on a new site. And so we took advantage of locating that diving well where the existing diving well is. So we can save a couple of those walls to use them as a form, only to construct the new diving well inside of it. But that would be a completely new pool, again, utilizing the, where the location of the existing pool and the location of the existing bathhouse. The other thing that, working with the pool committee, we're recommending is that we raise the level of the parking lot by approximately four feet. And you can see there's actually a retaining wall that goes pretty much around that. And then there would be a one-way in on the west side to come up and have a drop-off area. And then you could go into the parking lot. And then when you exit, you would actually exit on the east side. So it'd be much more user-friendly in terms of parking, in terms of dropping people off. And then that parking lot would be just 12 inches lower than the bathhouse. So it would meet ADA requirements for getting from the drop-off area into the bathhouse. Finished grade on the deck of the proposed pool compared to the existing pool is we're going to work with, if the project does move forward, in the demolition stage of this project, we'll find out that exactly where we could put that deck. But the intent now is to have that deck about a foot to 18 inches lower than the current deck. So we're going to take the bathhouse and pool down as low as we can so that we don't have to take the parking lot up quite so high. Okay, does it lock up on me? Doesn't want to advance, Aaron. Yep, it is. Of course, for this concept, we put together a probable cost estimate. This is, you know, we are consultants, professional consultants, engineers, and architects. So we did put together a probable cost estimate, understanding that this would go out for public bids, for competitive bids. We base this on historical data from other recently completed aquatic centers. So we do have it broken down. As you can see, in the budget, we, on the left column, is what would be considered your base project. The center column is your alternates that the pool committee chose to split out. And then the other column, again, is items that maybe could be done under another budget, but they're all added into the final number at the bottom. I also want to point out that, well, we broke out all the owner-direct purchases that could be done, so that you can see what it costs for each of the play elements. And again, those are items that you might get sponsorships for, the shade elements. We even got the dry play elements in there. We do have it broken down into classes for the bathhouse and the aquatics portion of it. But on the, towards the bottom of the budget estimate, you will see that we have also got $87,000 in there for contingency. So we do have that contingency factor in there. So if you do look towards the bottom, the facility as proposed could be anywhere from 3.2 million to just under 4 million, depending on how much the city wants to do, and then how much would be later, future, or donations, or fundraisers. So, but all added up, it's just under $4 million. We do have all the professional services included in there. We also have a city fee. There's a cost to do the referendum, the vote, and some other things that the city fee, the city will have to pay for. So we do have a percentage in there for city fees as well. So we do feel that these are probable project costs and not just construction costs. So this should be, should be as far as today, there should be a not-to-exceed. We do hope that bids will come in less than this. What else do I got? Oh, we also did, the pool committee wanted to do a construction timeline. So we did a probable timeline. And it does show on that timeline that we have a first Tuesday in March, I think is March 4th. So we have that as a election day for the referendum. And then we could proceed immediately after that with a demolition package to do those drawings, bring them back. We feel, and it's our recommendation, that we'd get better bids on the reconstruction if we did the demo package first, so the contractors could see a clean sight and don't have to, you know, have a factor in there for what-ifs that they might encounter. We've done a couple of these projects where we bid the demolition and reconstruction together as one package. And that's what we found out happens, is that they kind of do a Murphy's Law thing that, you know, they put a little cushion in there for themselves. So we are recommending that we would do the demolition work over the summer, be done with that by the end of June, then take bids on the reconstruction work and get that work started in probably late July. Or, excuse me, into August. So with that, oh, we did, in the study report, we did go through the process of renovated facility projections and cost estimates, operating costs, and that's included in the study as well. We are, when we did this projection for the proposed facility, that bottom line over there, $16,675, is our projection on what you would net out operating this new proposed facility. So instead of subsidizing it by about $52,000 to $55,000 a year, and that's going to grow substantially if you try to maintain that pool, we're projecting that you'd actually make a little money operationally on the new facility. And that's based on the pool committee's decision to have a general admission rate of $4. And also projecting $1 per person in concessions. So it's based on $5 per person on that. So that's where we, that's what we base the numbers on. So we did, so this is the final proposed facility. A little bit better in color. You can see what's going on a little bit better. So you see the seating area. You see the shade a little bit better, the dry play, the soft turf areas, the rental areas, and then approach and drop-off. And then that pathway right outside of the rental areas would then lead up to the, was it tennis courts? No, hockey rink up there. So that would continue on up there. Yep, okay. So are there any questions I can answer?
You mentioned if everything went through as planned, starting date like of August, what's the completion on something like this?
Oh, thank you. The completion would then be May of 2015. So it would be done, operational, go through the startup, make sure everything's operating, do the state health inspection prior to Memorial Day of 2015.
And what kind of a operating season are you talking about? I mean, we've run a pretty short season in our pool now. Is this going to be more time or same hours?
Yeah. Yeah, the pool committee did decide that they want this thing to be set up to be operational from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend. And assuming that you can get the staff to do that, that's what they're recommending as your operating season.
And your budget estimates are on that?
Yes, they are. So that's a 13-week season.
What is our season right now, Aaron?
It does depend on weather and things like that. We often open late, close early when we start losing guards to college and things. So it does kind of depend. It varies each year. We never make it quite that long usually, just because our usage drops off so dramatically towards generally the end of summer. But it will depend. The hope is, is that with the new facility, they'll keep coming all the way through to the end.
Did you talk to the school on this? Did the committee talk to the school about this?
You know, just initial conversations about, you know, we're looking at this and those sort of things. But the school, I don't think at this time really has much interest in partnering with anything. I think they'd like to see it because it's a definite amenity to help bring families into town. But as far as any sort of partnership with the school, I don't think that's something that we can really work out right now.
It's six lanes that are in this one. Is that something can be a part of the school if they wanted to? Or doesn't that meet the standards or something?
I don't know as far as actual competition. The school could definitely use it for a lot of different things. As far as a competitive for swimming, I'm not sure because it's in the summer. So it doesn't help much.
Sure.
My name is Judy Conway.
Come on up.
Come on up, Judy.
And currently, my daughter is on a swim team in Northfield.
Okay.
And we travel three to four nights a week. And in the summer, the Northfield, we can't get into the public, the middle school pool for competitions. So if we have a six-lane pool, it's a possibility to bring competitions here. Because there's not too many, excuse me, there isn't too many public pools that take on summer swim competitions. But if you, if you don't have a six-lane, there's no chance of you doing that.
And 25-meter, would that be?
25 yards.
Are they yards or is it 25 meters on those? Because usually for swim competitions, I know they use, usually it's 25-meter pools or 25-yard pools.
The only, the only two, the only two competition lengths in the U.S. are 25-yard or 50-meter.
Okay.
We do some 25-meter pools for training only.
Okay.
Because two laps is your 50-meter course.
Mm-hmm.
But, but all the high school pools and college pools in the state are 25-yard.
Okay, that's the question I had there on that then.
And I also would like to add, currently, there's eight different students from Cannon Falls that go to Northfield. And there's a few that go to Red Wing to swim, club swim right now.
Is that a closed-in facility over there?
Um, and at this time of year, we do it at the middle school, or in Red Wing, they do it at their middle school. I think that's where their pool is.
Right.
So, I was on the committee, and there was another mom that isn't able to be here tonight. But she also brings her kids over for that. And we just thought that Sundays in the past have always been a quiet day at the pool. So weekends would be the time to get competitions here. And Northfield didn't want to have anything to do with that for some reason. So they only went with a four-lane pool. So like, our club can't host anything in Northfield.
Thanks for your input on that.
Well, I guess I would just like to say, some of the things that jumped out at me here is, is one, currently, when we operate our pool here, we lose $50,000 to $60,000 a season. And I notice you're projecting a slight increase. I think it would be more realistic to say it's probably going to be break even. But that's still much improved over our current system. And the other thing, and I think as we, Aaron alluded to, we'd have, as we go forward, if the council elects to go forward with a referendum, we would have meetings for the public, at which time we would be able to also show them that, gee, if we had to go through, if we did not approve a referendum for a reconstruction, we would have to keep doing the fixes that we do. And in order to become fully ADA compliant, you're talking, you're approaching $2 million in that cost if you wanted to cover everything that the state and Fed require.
That's correct.
And so as I see it, we have basically three choices. We can go forward with the referendum and hope that the people support that for a reconstruction. Or if that does not go, work out, we can, over the next few years, we're going to have to come up with a lot of money to become ADA compliant. Or the third alternative, which is probably the worst, is to go without a pool at all. Because our pool is way past its life expectancy right now.
It is.
And, because it was built, I believe, around 1970, give or take.
Yeah, we, we found it was, we did our research, found it was built in 1969.
So I think it's, and this has been on our CIP program for a long time. We might have moved the year here or there. But now seems to be the time to strike out on this before we, as a city, have to put a lot more money into it. Let's see what the people think and let them decide. And hopefully, they'll be willing to do that. And like I said, we've calculated it into our financial plan down the road. So let's get it done.
One thing I'd like to mention is that the pool committee, we had three generations of those operating performer for it. And they actually tweaked down a little bit on the staffing cost and then up the, right, we actually started at $3 per person for a rate. And they thought that that was a little too conservative. So we did move it up to four. Because the first generation we ran through, it lost about $6,000 a year. So the pool committee worked good at really tweaking those operational numbers. And they're pretty realistic.
And the other thing is, you know, if, with all the pool in this community, we end up giving around more citizens awards like Jeff did tonight, because we have more kids swimming in the river, where the currents are unpredictable. And that just makes more work for everybody. You know, we've got a 40-year-plus-old swimming pool here. Then, like you said, you've got a couple of walls that are starting to bulge on the pool. If that goes out, it's going to be closed and have to be redone anyway. And we're talking a lot more money there. I mean, I think if the citizens agree to build it, and you build it right, and you put more into it, it's going to run more efficient. You're going to have more draw to the pool because you've got more things for people to do. I know years ago, in the Navy, when they redid the pool on base, I mean, the place was just packed all the time because it had the big slide and everything else. And this is 20 years ago. But it'll be up to the citizens if the council wants to move forward with the referendum here.
Aaron, just one other quick question is, is there some kind of a, when this doesn't meet the standards, is there kind of an inspection that goes on and they come in and give you a deadline date to make you meet it? I mean, you know, to be honest here, I think the pool is a good thing. But I also, since I've been involved on here, we've taken an infrastructure path. And that really needs to be updated. And we started at that path, and we're working at that. And, and we had the fire hall situation, which I consider to be more of a safety situation for our officers down there and stuff. And that had to be done. And our library thing, somebody was kind enough to donate money, and that made a wash for us on that. But in this whole overall picture... But in this whole overall picture, I think about, every time it floods, I hold my breath with that sewer crossing. That bridge is still there when it goes down, and we don't do anything with it. We have a large gas main that goes across our old bridge. We have a large water main that goes across our old bridge, and it's one of the worst-rated bridges in the state. If either one of them went down, it would take all, the whole south end of Cannon Falls for gas. So it isn't that I'm not interested in this, but I also am a mechanical person and I understand the infrastructure stuff. And I really feel we have to deal with that. And to put this pool on top of it unless you came back to me and said, okay, this budget is dropping in five years, and then this fits in, I'm really nervous about putting another four million on top of our stuff we've been doing. That's the thing that bothers me, and I don't know what the answer is. But I wanted to throw that out there. And it does bother me, I thought the rates would be higher. And that's one thing that did bother me. I want the pool to be a place for everybody, that the rates don't, we don't build such an expensive thing. The rates get so high that the kids are going to the river, can't afford to go to the pool. So I do have a lot of concerns about it, and I don't know what the answers are, but I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Well, I think, Leroy, that's why tonight, we're gonna vote on whether to move it to a referendum and let the people decide.
Yeah, you know what, I, I'm a little bit scared they're gonna vote for it because, and as a council member, I have to figure out how we're gonna pay for that, make that work. And they always want our budgets to go down, and if we do this, that budget is no longer going down. I know that. So, yeah, it's kind of a double-edged stake. I know what you're saying, Bill.
Any other discussion? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the resolution as presented, ordering a special election for March the third for the new pool.
I will second that.
Motion by Merle, seconded by Bill. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Five ayes, one no. Motion carries.
On behalf of the pool committee, thank you.
And I'd also like to thank everybody that put their time in from the pool committee. It's good to get citizen involvement when we're making decisions like this. And all we can do now is, if we wanted to see it go forward, is help advertise it. Okay, that moves us on to item B, the Sustain odor monitoring project.
I briefly filled the council in on this at the work session for the budget, just because we included in the budget for next year, and the proposed budget at least. So these are actually the official agreements to do the monitoring project. The first one is from St. Cory Sensory, and that's the one that'll actually provide us with the monitoring equipment and the training to use it. And then the second one is from Trinity Consultants, which will actually kind of conduct the study, gather all the data, kind of sort through it all, and then ultimately, in the end, come back with their findings and, you know, detailed information on what they see as the issue, how it's measured, all those sort of things. So these two proposals together is what gets us to what we've been talking about, is, is there a problem or not? And if there is a problem, what is it, when is it, how bad is it? And then we can work with, in this case with Sustain, to try to address that issue. So it's something that I think is important for us to do. We need to just kind of decide and just figure out one way or the other, is there truly a problem or not? And if there is, we need to figure out how we can fix it. You know, we want to have all of our businesses to be successful and do good things. But at the same time, we want everybody also to be good neighbors to each other. And to do that, we've got to make sure that, you know, these things are done and monitored. So this is our first step with this. After this process, I know we get complaints about other businesses in town. Once we do it ourselves once, or once we go through it once in this fashion, we should be able to muse. We have the equipment, we'll have the training, we'll be able to do this then when we have complaints in other areas. We'll be able to address other areas as well. So it's kind of a good way for us to start in getting involved with this, since it is our responsibility as local government. Now, the state used to do it, and they stopped doing it a long time ago. And really, for a long time, it was kind of just not being done by anyone. But now that this equipment's available, that they have these standards that are uniform, we have a chance to start dealing with it. So that's where, these are the details and the proposal we discussed and what's in the budget.
We would have a number of our city employees trained to use this equipment. So some of this stuff is a one-time cost that we can use, not just for Sustain, but for any other potential complaints within the city.
Yep, yep. My hope would be is, once we do this, once we go through it once this way, we should be able to, in the future, be able to do it ourselves.
I just don't want to see people thinking that we're like a witch hunt.
Right.
You know, I mean.
Well, yeah, exactly. And I've met with, you know, with the owners of Sustain too and just explained, I mean, I think they recognize too that they are the ones that historically have generated the most, either complaints or at least, you know, indirect, it's, you know, there's a problem, it's Sustain, that sort of thing. And, but it won't just be, we do one and we move on. I mean, this will now allow us to handle all of our industrial, commercial businesses. So if we have more issues, we can deal with those as well. I mean, and we will, if we ever, whatever we end up doing, it's going to be uniform. I mean, it'll apply to everyone in town, every business will be treated the same, there won't be anything different. We'll have very set standards that we'll be looking at. So, yes, it'll be something that, while we are starting with one facility, it would be, easily be able to use with any others, and we'll be using the exact same criteria across the board.
So it would be creating an ordinance to, for monitoring this.
Yep. Yeah, once we actually get through a study and we figure out, is there really a problem or not? Then it becomes, you know, do we need to get an ordinance in place to deal with this? Can we just work with Sustain, in this case, just get it fixed? There's nothing we really need to do about it? You know, those sort of things. So the potential is that you can have an ordinance in place to deal with some of these things. But at the same time, often you don't need one because you can just work with the business and get it resolved. And there's not a need to go through that whole process and have to worry about that, so.
I know the PCA has commented on some other things recently. And, you know, and they do come down and make sure that the businesses are in compliance in other areas. But this area, they don't. So, I mean, I think we should, we've got to start somewhere.
You know, Aaron, this is such a hard thing. Because I, the other day, I was coming back from up north on a service call. So I pulled in there, and the two gentlemen that are here tonight, I asked them if they could have the time that day to just explain to me what their operation is and how it all works. I was under the assumption there was methane and other things going on. And they were kind enough to spend about a half an hour with me and explain their process. They explained to me that, basically, when they started out in nineteen eighty-eight, that this was a complete new thing, and they worked their way through it and came up with the process to do this. They also explained to me that they got fifty employees out there, they ship this stuff all over the world. They're having somebody from China coming out in the next month or two to meet with them about the product over there too. So being in the ventilation and the heating business, I totally understand our industrial park. You, when I go out and work in some big commercial jobs, the makeup air units are big enough that I can walk inside them, stand in them when I'm working on it. That's how much air is going into these buildings. When you talk about the air that's flowing through there, you're probably talking, it's equivalent to ten, fifteen homes. Their furnace is running, going into one system. So when they do smell out there, and that ventilation is going into the welding shop out there, or if energy is maxed out and they need a lot of ventilation, their smell is going directly into them buildings from what's outside. So from a ventilation standpoint, I understand the problem too. But I also understand that back when they started, they were approved to be out there. They do have fifty employees that depend on them for paychecks every week. So I guess, they explained to me with their process out there that they're actually firing when the smell comes, and then it has to be a certain moisture temperature. And when things aren't balanced out, that's when we get the smell. They said some of the worst complaints they had a few years ago was because one of their best employees left or something happened. And when they trained in the new people, they got like eight calls a week or something. So I understand this from both sides. It's critical for them to keep their efforts to get these down to minimal days. I guess my other thing I thought about, and I never got into talking to them more about that, but when they rotate these dirt piles and stuff, they said they're in twelve-hour operation mode out there right now. When they rotate these piles, I guess my thinking was, is I want the smell gets worse out there. Maybe instead of rotating a whole hundred yards of piles, you should only do twenty-five yards a day. Maybe it should only be done, when you watch the weather report, you're gonna have over ten mile an hour wind. I don't know. But I think the problem is, is I, they're a viable business, they're part of an industrial park. I want to be fair to them. But if it walks like a duck, and it looks like a duck, and it smells like a duck, we gotta do something about it. So that's just my input. I also thought that if we would ever have a couple council members and Dave, and maybe set up a group and actually meet about this more than probably what's been done, and get a better understanding of it, or if everybody's heads are beat up against the wall enough, they've had enough of the meeting and stuff, I would like to be on the panel to look into it more. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's fine. We said that when we actually, if we approve this and start the process, that we'd invite Sustain to all the meetings so they knew what was going on fully. You know, we're not trying to hide anything, and we're not trying to, you know, play gotcha or anything like that. We want them involved so they know what we're doing. So if we do find anything, they can understand what we found, and then we can work together to figure out, well, what can we do to address it? So with that, I can, Leroy, if you want to be involved in those meetings, I'll let you know when they are, and you can sit in on those too. That'd be just fine.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, this time, chair will take a motion to approve the proposals as presented to conduct an odor monitoring study on sustained natural fertilizers.
So moved.
I will second that.
Motion by Merle, seconded by Bill.
Hey, Robbie, I just want to make sure I understand now. We're not buying this equipment ourselves. We're going with hiring somebody to do this test now, right?
No, we'll own the equipment too, though. We're buying equipment, we're getting trained to use it. But then we also have a consultant that's gonna guide us through how you do something like this. You know, we've never dealt with anything like this before, so we want to make sure we do it right, we do the study right, so that any results we get are accurate results, they're enforceable results, they're, you know, those sort of things. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. And we can't, we can't just hire somebody to do this. We have, that's, you feel that's the best way to go? To buy this stuff and train our people?
Yep, definitely.
You know, Leroy, if, I mean, if we're gonna use it, I mean, because we get complaints, and Sustain's not the only business in town that we get complaints on. And if we have odor nuisances, and we can go out and we can measure it ourselves, we don't have to hire somebody to come in. Once somebody's trained and you've got the stuff in your hands, it's a lot cheaper than trying to hire somebody every time you gotta, you have to do this.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Robbie. I think it's a good thing. I also, I still think it's a good thing, but I think we're really opening up a can of worms here for a bunch of testing. And, but I think that's a good thing.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. All right, moves us on to item C, the two thousand and fourteen utility rates.
It's on here somewhere. Oh, there it is.
Do they have a copy of it on there?
They should have a copy, yeah. But let's see if we can do it maybe that way. Doesn't help you a whole lot if you have to scroll through it, I guess. I don't know.
We'll figure it out. All right.
I don't.
Did you get an email?
On my phone, but not on my email.
I got one. She sent an email.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I should have, I was doing this to Dave because we did have Mr. Holden come through the front door. So I forgot to lock it after our meeting beforehand. And then when I went out there to do it, when he came in, I couldn't find the, our magic little key, so I think Dave hid it somewhere. So we're gonna have Dave lock the front door, just in case, if anybody wandering through City Hall. So that was that interruption. So I apologize. So back to Rebecca.
Good evening. Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers and Associates. And I am here again this evening to give you your annual update and some recommendations regarding the utility rates. We do have the executive summary, which I believe you have in front of you, and we have up here posted also. The, I think, key message for the evening, and the good news, is that the water, sewer, and storm utilities have established rates in the past that are adequate to meet the operating expenses, and you have financially healthy and solid cash reserves. So that's the key message, but I am gonna go into some more detail on that. As I said, we're doing the annual update of your debt. And with that, a couple changes or things that we did incorporate this year that were new, were the debt that was issued in 2013 to pay for the Eastside Project One. And then we also have incorporated future utility upgrades within the street reconstruction programs, which we are looking at doing potentially every other year. The final additional capital costs that we'll discuss are plans for a potential new water tower and then some other sewer projects that may be coming up. And then also the need to increase utility rates to build reserves to help pay for what those future capital projects may be. We have made some assumptions or changes to the assumptions from past years just because of what we have seen with, happening with the growth, the trends in growth, the future development. We scaled both of those back mainly due to some of the economic issues that we've seen all over. And you can see in the middle here, there is that chart that gives some estimates on what we are assuming for growth with the residential and with the commercial as we look out through 2017. Along with that, the analysis that we did also looked at reducing some of the costs or reducing some of the revenue that we may see from developer fees, again, with that new development coming in. Unfortunately, with what we've seen and slower development the last several years, and maybe in the next year or two still until we continue to recover, is that that shift or the lower revenue generated from development does shift to the existing taxpayers or users and their fees in order to make sure that the debt service and operating reserves are covered and so that there are adequate funds. I'm going to go through each utility here and give a summary. Starting with the water utility, again, all of the financial activity for the water utility is accounted for in the water fund. So we've looked at that as a whole. The operating costs are the biggest expense for the fund, looking at about fifty-three percent. And then the balance of those costs, or the total costs in the operating fund, or water fund, include the capital improvements and new expenses, and then also the debt for the existing expenditures. With that, the city has consistently increased water rates on an annual basis. We are looking to or recommending to continue that trend for 2014 and thereafter. And the reason- And, um, the reason for that is it does allow the city to collect the adequate revenues, again, to pay for those existing expenses. Um, but also help generate some revenue to pay for future, um, improvements and capital expenses that will be made, again, with the goal of meeting and, um, continuing to sustain those fund balance requirements, but also having some cash on hand so that when there are new projects, you don't need to bond a hundred percent for the project. Or if there are some small unexpected expenses, you do have cash reserves available to pay for those, again, to not have to bond a small amount for expenses. Um, what we are looking for, for the water rates is proposing a four percent increase to the flat rate or the base rate and to then the usage rates for two thousand fourteen. Um, I do want to note, this is less than what we had projected in the past. Um, past years, we had been recommending a ten percent increase and we were able to, um, reduce that partly because of some of the dry summers that we've had. We have been able to increase the revenues, people have been watering more, so, um, those came in higher than anticipated in past years. Um, but we are still needing to or recommending a rate increase in order to provide that adequate ca- cash flow for the operations, the future capital, and then also the existing debt. Um, and then the other part of that, as I mentioned, is the slower projections in growth. And so we want to make sure that, um, until we start seeing higher increasing or an increase in growth, that we do have adequate funds to cover those expenses. Um, so again, a four percent annual increase is being recommended for the water fund. What that means then in dollars to the, uh, average residential user is that we estimate that an average residential property consumes about eight hundred cubic feet per month of water. And so we're proposing an increase that would equate to a dollar four cents, um, per month for the average residential home. The chart in the middle there does break that down, um, for what we're looking at for residential users, again, you can see that an average home is about eight hundred cubic feet for month, per month, but it does, um, break it into other usage and then also for the commercial users. And then it projects out that four percent increase through two thousand seventeen. Um, I, I'm happy to take questions after each utility, or if you'd like me to go through the whole thing and take questions, I'm happy to do that too.
I'd like to ask you a question while it's fresh in my mind, I got the old age problem here now. The four percent, uh, what is the dollars that that amounts to, uh, for the year? Is that like twenty-five thousand or fifteen thousand or, or what's the four percent?
Um, for total for the fund?
Yeah, what's that gonna add to that fund?
Looking at, if we look at water sales, it's about, um, twenty thousand, about twenty thousand two hundred per year.
Okay, so that's a four percent, so it'd be roughly, uh, what, about a half percent? All right. Four percent, you said it'd be twenty thousand, so-
I was gonna say, the other part of that, that all equates into this is, um, the dollar amount, if you look strictly at what we're looking for the increase in water revenues, is about that twenty thousand. But we have looked at, um, revenue increasing at about two percent, this is for all funds. We've looked at expenses increasing at a three percent rate. And then we have also factored in what new growth would come in. So, um,
Well, the one thing-
It's not, it's not a completely pure calculation.
Okay, I looked at your growth in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, you know, actually in the next year, we're adding about twenty units to this thing. Um, um, in the, in the last year here, we had Gemini come on, we had our spit plant come on, we had Homestead come on, we had Casey's come on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we also made a deal this year with eleven additional hookups that we did that we gave a better deal if we could get them hooked up in one year. So actually, Aaron, you, you helped me with this. Yeah, I'm looking at that, we're actually bringing on probably about twenty new customers. And part of our thinking was, when we did this, was you could charge all these whack and sack fees so nobody could afford, afford to hook up. So you, if you can't get them hooked up, you still got to save about a money and you got nothing, you aren't adding anything. So, our thinking was, we needed everybody to contribute it. So, I, I see that your projections there and I was, I thought we were gonna do a lot better than that, to be honest with you.
Well, and, and these are just, they're just projections and they're just, uh, conservative for saying the rates. What we are going to do for next year is, because we have all these new users coming on, but they're all diff- very different users, you know, residential is residential, but we also have some commercial users that are gonna be very different. And we're not exactly sure what their use is at, so it's hard to estimate that. So what we're gonna do next year is, at the end of the year next year, before we set rates for fifteen, we're gonna take a look at, um, we're gonna do an updated, it's like, what do you call it, actual usage report?
Actual usage.
And you don't want to do those every year because it's really not necessary every year and it's kind of expensive to do, but we haven't done one for four, five years now?
Four years.
Yeah, so, next year with all the things that have happened over the last four years, we're gonna do that actual usage report, which will update what are we actually seeing going through water sewer, all that stuff? And that'll help us with the rates moving forward, cause then we'll really have a, a better handle on all this new usage that's coming on, especially all the stuff that's come the last year or so. Um, and these numbers here don't necessarily play into that quite as much. So, we don't know for sure what's gonna necessarily happen with all these users. You hate to estimate too high, you hate to estimate, you know, too low, I guess, too. So we try to get a good balance of what we think it's gonna be. Um, but we'll actually do the, the real study next year, once we have almost a full year of all these new, um, connections onboard. And then we'll have a much better idea of rates and, and those sort of things based on usage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, if you just take, if we do end up with, uh, twenty more hookups between this year and the end of next year, um, it's pretty easy to say that, well, the commercial ones, just leave them out of it. I mean, Hancock Concrete out here, the volume they use is a lot. But you're probably gonna add another ten thousand to your budget right there. And we're talking about the four percent is twenty thousand. So, I guess some more comments later, but you helped me with that.
Well, Leroy, I would say, uh, two, uh, two replies to you. One, uh, the four percent, uh, projection is certainly better than the ten percent from the past years. And regarding the whack and sack, I was gonna have some comments on that when we, uh, talk about the budget a little bit later, so.
Funny, it's, uh, you know, I'll speak more after you get down there.
All right.
Four percent is a lot when you got a big commercial account. We heard that yesterday at a meeting, uh, out of Canbelle. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Nope, no problem, I'm happy to take questions at any time. Um, with that, I will move though on to the sewer. Um, we did not see a lot of changes in our recommendation on this. Um, again, just as a reminder, you still have the two thousand and one PFA loan that is outstanding. Um, and then there also are planned utility upgrades, again, in conjunction with the street reconstruction program every other year that would, um, affect the sewer utility and future projects. Um, we're looking at, or what we've planned in our CIP, or what you have planned, I should say, in the CIP, is doing those projects on the odd year, so again, looking at two thousand fifteen. Um, with this, we are proposing to increase the sewer fees at ten percent per year through two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen. And then beginning in two thousand seventeen, um, doing just an inflationary increase of five percent per year. And these are consistent, um, recommendations based on what we have done in the past. So we have not seen changes on what our recommendations are for those increases. And again, the chart that shows the dollars, yes.
A question, um, regarding the, uh, when you talk, you're talking about the loan that we still have from the big, you know, uh, thing back in early two thousand-
Two thousand one, I believe.
Two thousand one. When that comes off the books, which I believe is in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, something like that, will that positively impact the kind of rates that we're looking at, all, everything else being equal?
Um, it, y- yes, it should, and, um, you're jumping ahead just a little bit, but where that's going to get you, um, and I'll spend a little more time on this in a minute, is that, um, the sewer fund is a little below where we're looking to be for our target goal. And when that debt comes off, then we will achieve that target goal, possibly even exceed it, which would give a little more, um, a goal for our fund balance, which would give a little more flexibility on what we would need to do after that.
Thank you.
Are there other questions on the, um, sewer at this time?
What about the ten percent, have you got a number roughly on that for me?
Um, with that, we are looking at, um, on residential, looking at the minimum charge of twenty-two seventeen this year, bringing it up to twenty-four thirty-eight next year, and then the consumption rate of seven seventy-four would go up to eight fifty-one.
Yeah, how about, how about a total number though for the year roughly?
Um-
You know, like you said, the, the water was-
Oh, okay, for what, what that means on the total budget part of it, okay.
Aaron's probably grinning, he knows where I'm headed.
Do I need to be concerned with that? We are looking at, um, about a hundred and... Um, about a hundred and twenty thousand on that.
Wow.
Looking at sewer sales incre- oh, that's sales increase in revenue, that's what that would be. Um, the expenses, we are looking at incre- or actually, um, we have estimated a slight decrease in the expenses with that.
So-
Um, part of that due to some refundings.
Rough, rough number, I mean?
Oh, um, budget for total revenue in two thousand fourteen, looking at one point two nine million. Total expenses, just under a million.
I think the hundred and twenty thousand though is what the rate increase will bring in for additional revenue, is that?
Yes, correct.
So that hundred and twenty thousand.
Wow. Boy, that's a heck of a difference, ain't it? Hundred thousand more than the water.
Well, you're getting six percent more though, I mean, you're only doing four percent on water, you're doing ten percent on sewer.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I mean, uh, yeah, thank you.
Other questions on sewer? Looking at the stormwater utility, this is a relatively new utility, it was established in two thousand nine. Um, prior to that, any expenses related to the stormwater were being paid with the general fund. Um, so with this, it's good news that you have made some steady increases in building up that cash balance, which is a very positive thing. Um, the residential rates for this are fixed at a flat amount of two dollars and forty-two cents per home. Um, commercial properties, again, just as a reminder, are looked at on an individual basis, depending on the amount of impervious, um, surface that the, um, commercial property has. Um, we are in, recommending only an inflationary increase, um, at that two percent for the stormwater utility, and again, that would work, help, um, make the current bond payments and then build those reserves. Again, it's a new fund, um, we're looking to still build those reserves so that in the long term, we can, um, have a target and have some funds on hand for emergencies or smaller projects. Um, and again, I want to note that this two percent inflationary increase is less than what we had projected in past years. We had been projecting a need to increase at ten percent annually, so we were able to reduce that down to an, just basically inflationary increase. You can see in that chart, um, this year, like I said, we were looking at, um, two dollars and forty-two cents. For two thousand fourteen, we're looking at a three cent increase, so two dollars and forty-seven cents for a residential home. So if we look at, what does that mean altogether, because the, um, big question is, what does that mean to an average homeowner, or in our example, I have average homeowner's bill? Um, we are looking at for two thousand thirteen, a total bill of, um, eighty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. For two thousand fourteen, we would be proposing a six dollar and forty cent increase to a total of eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. And then you can see how that, um, projects forward based on the recommendations that I identified. Again, noting that in two thousand seventeen, it is a little smaller increase and that was due to being able to start reducing that increase for the sewer fund because we would have met or gotten closer to where we want that fund balance goal to be. So, the second part of this and kind of looking at, um, why, why we need to have those reserves is looking at the cash balances and those financing of capital improvements. Um, we do have on page nine, there is the capital improvement plans for each of the three, or beginning on page nine, are the capital improvement plans for each of the three funds, looking at the water one. Um, again, I mentioned that depending on growth, we are looking at, um, possibly needing new water tower. We have factored that in. Depending on when that growth and that need would occur, that could be pushed back. And, um, if that was pushed to a future date or farther out, that could also help, um, impact what those rates are in the, at least near term. The other item that I did mention is the, um, treatment facility, depending on what may happen with the state and what their mandates are. And so we do have that plugged in, in two thousand twenty-one. Um, again, depending on what, what that mandate actually is, that is a variable that is subject to change. Um, and then I think those are the main, um, two items that are maybe more questionable, but again, for the sewer system, we have the CIP, and then you can see in your packet that we also have it, um, down there on page ten for the storm sewer. As I mentioned, um, one of the goals that we have here also is to make sure that our proposed rates impose the lowest increases that we believe will still leave the city's utility systems in good health. So that means being able to cover the operating expenses, um, the debt, account for those capital needs, and then also retain that, um, targeted cash balance for any emergencies or unforeseen, um, items that might need to be covered. We are looking at a target cash balance that is equal to fifty percent of the current year's operating spent, expense, plus, um, a hundred percent of the next year's debt service payments. And there are charts on pages seven and eight that can show you kind of where we are at with that. Um, you can see, looking at the water fund, that our cash balances are very close to what that target is. Um, the target being, um, kind of the maroon or purplish color and then where we are projecting those balances to be in kind of that bluish color. Um, again, based on the recommendations.
So the recommendations for the fifty percent and whatever the other one was, you said a hundred percent?
Hundred percent of any debt service, principal and interest for the next year.
Why, why do we, uh, do we pick that number? Because of emergencies that could happen or, or, um, I guess what I'm thinking here, you're running a fifty percent reserve and we're trying to put all new infrastructure in over the next five years or so. Uh, so we're trying to cut our losses of things that can happen and yet we're still maintaining a pretty high reserve. Is, is that normal, is that a state number or where does that come from?
Um, it's, it's a normal or, um, number that we see very consistent. It's not a mandated number, but it is a number we see very consistent by policy across the board for, um, communities in the state. The one hundred percent of debt service is to, um, hopefully have that money on hand and ensure that you wouldn't need to levy for it. Again, with them being enterprise funds, making sure that the revenues are paying the debt associated with that. So that's where the hundred percent comes from. Um, the fifty percent of operating is, what is used as a standard for, um, communities or kind of, it's a policy decision ultimately, but it is- it's a policy decision ultimately, but it is quite common. And again, it's for if you had some unforeseen emergency, that you do have cash on hand, so you wouldn't need to.
So, so.
Bond for.
An example of emergency would be, Leroy had mentioned it, we have the sewer line going across a bridge. Something happens there, we've got the money on hand. We don't have to go borrow it, paying extra interest. We're, we're right there, we're ready to go. That's what those type of things are designed for.
Exactly, exactly. And then the other part, which is going to be a smaller variable, but for those years where maybe it's a very, very wet year and your revenues are down. In the water fund, for example, your revenues are down because nobody's watering. It's rained all summer. And so it provides a little bit of a cushion also, just for the unknown that may happen.
Any other questions?
And then the final chart, I do want to discuss briefly the storm sewer fund. You can see this one looks significantly different than the other two. As I mentioned, we have been very pleased with the revenues that have come in on this. You are seeing right now that the revenues are projected to be higher than what we are looking at for that overall goal for our cash balance. The reason for that is that at this point, we are collecting the revenues. As I mentioned, the debt issued prior to 2009, a lot of that was paid with general fund debt. And so it's going to take some time to get this fund to balance out so that all of the expenses are allocated appropriately to the storm sewer fund. You do see that we are estimating that in 2020, that does get balanced out. And again, at, by that point, we would be able to have all of the operating expenses, all of the capital expenses and all of the debt coming from this fund instead of a combination of funds.
How does that work as far as, okay, commercial, you know, a commercial place? You've got, you said you kind of look at each one different or in that. How come some places they charge like $1,000 a quarter for storm sewer only?
It's all based on impervious surface. So if you have an area with a large paved parking lot and those sort of things, you get charged more because you're causing more stormwater runoff. Versus if you have an area with a smaller parking lot and a lot of grass, you don't get charged for that pervious surface, just the parking lot area. So.
So who puts that, who?
The city engineer goes out and measures it all. So we measured it all when we first, when we first put this in a few years back. It was all measured. And then we also had an appeal process where they could, if they could show that they were retaining any of the water on site, or if they're processing themselves somehow, then we gave them credits for it back. Or if they put something in that would cause more of that stormwater to stay on site, then we would give them credits for it too. So we have a process in place where we've either given the credits or if people have questions, we tell them how they can get credits if they, if they want to by doing some different things. So.
So again, as I mentioned, with all of these funds, the proposed rates are going to provide that sufficient revenue to, find my spot here back, to pay the operating expenses, all of your debt obligations, principal and interest that you currently have, and then also build some capital or cash for capital projects. And again, just to reiterate, the importance of that cash balance is those unknown factors that may happen. The economy, the weather, what may happen with, like I said, wet years versus dry years and how that's going to affect water revenue. And then also having the ability to pay some cash for your future improvements or utility upgrades, improvements that go along with the street reconstruction. So if you do have some cash available, you're able to bond less, therefore reducing your interest costs. And as I mentioned, depending on the size of the project, maybe you do have cash available so you wouldn't have to bond and have those expenses that are related to bonding. So basically, in summary, what we are proposing is a increase in the water fund of 4%, an increase in the sewer rates of 10%, the stormwater fund of 2%, and then continuing to do that annual update to see where we stand with that. And as Aaron mentioned, next year, looking at a more in-depth analysis so we can factor in and have a year's history of good, good numbers on what some of those new projects have been and new connections and how they have affected the existing utilities and use.
Any other questions?
With that, I'm happy to take questions or additional questions.
I. It, it is a lot of money and it's, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. It's a development, it's the things that happen. One thing that really made me nervous is we spent all this money updating our sewer plant here a few years ago or I don't know when, but that's what, what brought a lot of this on. We did some development things and then it ended up it didn't happen. So we got handed a lot here that we have to deal with. And I'm not thinking about the council dealing with it. The citizens accountable are dealing with it. I can remember when I first came on the council and yelling calls and people had asked me what the average sewer and water bill should be. At that particular time, it seemed like it was around $12, $14 a person is the way it worked out per month. Over a period of time, it, pretty obvious it went to $16, $18 a month. And now I tell people it's more like $24 a month. I, I just, I just think it's a lot of money. I guess the thing I'd like to say for you to hear and for Aaron to hear is that I kind of wanted to speak about this tonight and I wrote down some notes on this. And what I'm speaking about is my electric bill is $69 a month and my sewer and water bill is $109 a month. I'm talking about the elderly widow out there that is having a tough time making it and she's wondering if she should flush her toilet every time she uses it. I'm talking about the single mom out there that's renting apartment in town here. And with these rates going up, her rent's going to go up. I'm talking about the family of five or six that the water bill is getting so high that they're thinking about cutting back on their wash once in a while. I think these numbers are getting high. I don't know what the answer is, but the whole thing of raising something 10% for the next 70 years, seven years and going up 70%, I, it just seems not even possible to me. It just seems like we failed to budget things right or something. And so I, I don't know what the answer is here. The numbers you gave me, like 120,000 will add to the water or the sewer fund and 20,000 to the water fund, or it might have been the other way around. But that's roughly 140,000. It's a lot of money and it, it does affect things. And I guess when I'm up to telling people that it's roughly $20, $22 a person, five years from now, I'm going to be telling it's $45 a person, that really bothers me. And yet, I don't know what the answer is. Outside of, if we could lower the reserves, we could help out there. The funny thing is about the reserves is we talked about if catastrophe would happen, but a friend of mine, him and I were talking and I was telling him that, you know, if the old bridge went down, it probably cost us 750,000 to put a new sewer system across there. Now, if we had a major flood and we had to do it right now, it'd probably be one and a half million to get it done right now, keep the sewer from running out of the river. He said, well, I think you're wrong, because he said if the storm took it out, he said chances are you'd get FEMA money and they'd pay for it. So there is some truth to that and that's a terrible way to do business. It's a terrible way to think, I think. I think some of our financial problems with our government, everything, there's been too much thinking like that. So I am concerned about our prices are just getting so high. And sometimes I talk too much, but I care. So I, I have to express that. It's, it's getting too, too high.
And I think the issue with that really is, we've talked, unfortunately, we talk about it every year, but it, it's, it's that concept of compounding. If we would have, and, and we, as I say, as a city as a whole, in, in 2001 or 2000, when the project was done and we got the bonds on the books, if we would have increased the rates at that time, say 3% a year from them until now, we could have stuck at 3% a year and that's where we'd be at. But when you keep it at zero for six, seven years and you spend down the, the reserves in, say, the sewer fund to basically nothing, then you have to raise the rates exponentially more moving forward to make up for those six or seven years where you didn't want to raise the rates, so you kept them at zero, but then seven years later, the council at that time had to deal with it. So that's always the issue is we, you hate to say it, but you're always playing catch up. You know, we have some fixed expenses that just are what they are. You know, we have to pay the debt service for that wastewater plant. It is what it is. And to pay for that, we've got to raise utility rates to, to come up with the money and to rebuild that, that reserve in the fund. Nobody wants to raise them. And we haven't always raised them to 10%. If you remember, each year, we've looked at it and some years, we're able to say get by with a six, get by with an eight. But the reality always is, is that at some point, we need to be to where the graphs show we should be in those funds. And to get there, this is where it is. Now, you know, next year, we will take a look at all the actual usage with all these new businesses and, and new users and maybe our usage will be such that we can look at a 5% increase. And then we can go 5% moving forward, dropping down to say two as a cost of living sort of inflationary adjustment in the future. But in reality now, we're still playing catch up. It just is what it is. You know, we do the best we can to keep it as low as we can, but until that bond comes off, I mean, we have some fairly high fixed costs. And it also just costs money to operate a wastewater system.
You made a, a good point that I thought about too, and I wrote it down, but I didn't say it is that a lot of this problem we've got, we're dealing with now is because the past council and the administration left it set for like three years and didn't deal with it. So, but I also thought about that this year and decided after three, four years now, at some point, I got to leave that alone and we got to address the problem we got and stop worrying about what somebody did in the past. But I, I still want to do whatever I can to keep this down. And for the people that I explained to the council members up here, these people that I see out on my calls, I see the single mom in the apartment house with a baby. And the apartment complex, we raise the bill, they don't pay for it. It gets added on to all the citizens in there. So some of them, it, the guy from Super America spoke up at our, our meeting out there that his sewer and water bill, I forget what he said, was like 1,000 or 2,000 a month. You add 10% to the one and add 5% to the other one, that's a lot of money when you're putting out that kind of. So it is a lot and I don't know what the answer is. I don't want to blame anybody, but I would like to try to take a different path and do something different.
At one time, didn't you say that these, a lot of other towns around had to improve their sewer systems?
Well, I said, what, what you're seeing is, is that we're not going to have to do anything with our sewer system for a long time. But a number of other communities are going to be facing these issues that we dealt with in 2000, which is you've got to update your wastewater plant. There's no choice. The, the requirements in the PCA are getting more stringent as far as operation and what you can do. And so those cities are going to be seeing, well, yeah, our rates are great now, but now we have to do plant upgrades, increase capacity, whatever. And their rates are going to then do, do the same thing. Ours, hopefully, everything remains as is, are going to, at some point, especially after 2020, 2021, we'll see that drop because that's that big fixed cost of that bond payment for that upgrade. So, yeah, you're seeing a lot of those. I know Kenny right now is having to decide how they're going to handle their big upgrades because they have to do it. And, and that's the hard part is you can do the upgrade, but then you got to do the, the accompanying rate adjustments to pay for it. So, you know, there is no easy answer. I mean, I wish I could tell you that we could do something different with our sewer operations to lower our expenses. But, I mean, Tom does everything he can to get that running as efficiently as possible at the most affordable way that he can. But it is what it is to run it, unfortunately. And, you know, at a certain point, we've done everything we can to try to keep those costs as low as possible, but there is just a fixed operational cost that we're dealing with.
Now, you obviously do work with other cities also. Do you find in general that they're having to always raise their rates almost? Maybe not.
Yes.
Some of them not maybe as high as ours in some years, but, but the general trend is always, nothing ever goes down in price. Everything always goes down.
You're, you're absolutely correct. And as Aaron said, we see a fair number of cities who have been in a position where they have planned for a large capital cost. And as, as Councilmember McCusker mentioned, annually doing small increases, so maybe that three, two or 3% annual increase and have done that. They're going to continue to annually increase, not as a, at as high of a percent. But then there are just as many other communities that are in a situation where they're playing catch up and needing to have higher rates. And then I guess the third group are those communities that haven't done that improvement yet. And some maybe are planning for it by doing some inflationary increases. Others are going to be in the position where they're going to need to do some drastic changes after they do that improvement to figure out how to pay the debts.
And I'm sure that previous councils, when they, when they did the big project for the new sewer plant and all that, they probably made a political decision at that time that they weren't going to raise rates for a number of years, and I think it was like five or six years. And future councils always have to deal with what's been dealt to them by previous councils. Whether you like it or not, we have to, we have to continue doing this. I don't enjoy it either. I don't like seeing my water and sewer bill go up either, but.
You know, I mean, we, we're, you know, as we, as we move on this, I mean, we, we deal with this every year and, and if we continue to, you know, if we, if we go lower and lower, all we're doing is kicking the dog. Like other councils did, we're kicking the can further and further down the road. We got to address it now. We can't keep trying to kick it down the road. I understand. I have to pay my water bill. I, you know, scrounge. I mean, you must be really living in the dark if you're only paying $69 a month for an electric bill. I mean, because.
Got the new bulbs, Robbie.
But you had to pay for those new bulbs.
But I mean, I mean, in the long run though, Leroy, as, as we look at this, I mean, we, the numbers are what they are and we have to, we have to pay the debt that has been established in the past. And we have to be able to plan for future projects or future emergencies as we move forward. I mean, and, you know, and it's, the numbers are there. I mean, the numbers don't lie. I mean, unfortunately. I mean, I wish we could, there was a way we could, you know, roll everything back and, but there's just not that, that way, any way to do it. I mean, at least we're locked into low interest rates at this time on these things because, you know, as the economy improves and in a couple of years, I mean, we're liable to see interest rates go way up, all of a sudden jump. And, and, you know, we're locked in at low rates and at least we're paying that amount instead of having to do it in a couple of years when these other places, people have to do it and they get locked in. You know, and we hear about the water bills, well, my, my water bill's high and, you know, I can go to Hastings and it's a lot cheaper. Well, you know, they're, but they're stuck with the Met Council and you've got 500,000 people paying, not just 4,000. So we have to look at it that way too. I mean, unfortunately, we're in a small town.
We don't have the volume. That's the problem.
Yeah, we got to work on bringing more people to town. So when you're out there doing your service calls.
And I've got some suggestions when we get to the budget thing about bringing more people to town.
But anyway, any other questions on the utility rates for tonight?
The other thing I just want to throw out there quick is, is I do like the number of, I think it was 20,000 on the water side. It was 120 on the sewer side, wasn't it, Aaron? Or did I get them reversed?
Yep, you got it right.
You're right.
The one thing that I do think about is, to me, we're going to be adding on roughly about 20 new hookups here. If that would. If that would add 15 to 20,000 a year from them, there's probably 50% operating cost in that. So, there is probably going to be another 10,000 more next year, I hope. So, that number, instead of being 20, would probably be 10. I don't, when you got that high number on the sewer end, I don't know how much things help. But I, I would like to try to do something, and that would be, I'd rather, I'd rather go with a lower reserve, and I'd rather throw some money in from our 800,000 reserve fund we got sitting there and try to make this at least a 50% better deal for one year. Last year, I think we did something like that, and we plugged it in like from five down to three or something. So, is there any way to go with a less, lesser reserve for a year and then do our study next year and then really see where things are at? Because that concerned me a little bit when you said that because you made it sound like it's more estimated figures than actual figures. And possibly, next year, you do the study and we get the actual figures? I'd just like to throw that out there. Get your thoughts on it.
At this point, Leroy, I don't think we can really do that if we're going to approve the budget tonight, which we have to do. The budget's going to have to be approved before the end of this evening. And if we keep, like we said in the past, if we keep throwing that money over there, we're just going to keep kicking this can down the road.
And it's that, this conversation of one-time costs for ongoing expenditures. I mean, you can take as much money as you want to out of the general fund reserve and put it in there to reduce the rates, but it doesn't affect, long-term, what's going to happen in those funds. So, you're not going to get that money back in the general fund reserves, and next year, you're going to be right back to where you were now, except that if you follow the plan, nothing changes. You're looking at a 15% increase then for the following year because you cut it down to five for one year using general fund reserves, but you can't keep doing that. We're going to run out of general fund reserves too then, which is what got us into trouble in the first place in the utility funds is by using reserves to pay for operational costs. The reserves really should be for one-time expenses or emergencies, not for supplementing operational costs because they don't last forever. Those reserves will go away, and then, we'll put our general fund the same place our utility funds are at.
I made my point. I'm ready to move on, guys.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other discussion, the chair will take a motion to approve the 2014 utility rates as recommended by elders and associates.
So moved.
I will second that.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
I gotta do it. No.
Five ayes, one nay. Eyes have it. Motion's approved. And that moves us on to item 9D, which is Resolution 2050, adopting the 2014 tax levy and budget.
Okay. All right. So, in the packet, we have a lot. We have copies of the budget in there, which are the same as the ones that were printed out and handed out to you at the work session. So, nothing has changed with those. We have the resolution in there approving the budget levy, and then, also, we have, every year, we have to have a public presentation, presenting the budget, discussing broad overview of revenues and expenditures. So, that's, that's what we're doing right now, is the actual budget presentation. Again, nothing's changed from the details that we discussed at the work session. It's, this is just the formal presentation. So, with that, like I said, we have to, we have to have a public input meeting. We don't have any public, I don't think there wants to have input, but we'll keep going. Okay, so, I didn't originally put this together, so I don't know why I don't. I don't know how to change it either. Okay, so, presentation. We'll take any comment, any discussion. And then, of course, the ultimate goal tonight is officially adopt the budget levy for next year. So, our 2014 tax levy, it's basically broken down into three areas, our general, our debt, and then, our non-general fund levy. So, obviously, our biggest is our general fund levy. It's about 1.25 million. After that is our debt levy, about 400,000, and then, our non-general fund's about 520,000, somewhere roughly in there. The non-general fund would include, like, the levy for the EDA, the fire department, the library, those sort of funds that we levy for. So, levy comparison, taking a look back. We had an increase in 2009 of about 4.6%. Since then, we've had the, a run of either decreases or flat with the proposed 3% decrease coming in this year. You can see in the bottom, our estimated tax capacity rate has been all over the place. And the main reason for that is that in basically 2011 and 2012, the county looked at Cannon Falls as far as evaluations. In 2011, they reevaluated all the commercial industrial property, so we actually saw a lot of those values drop. And then, in 2012, they did the residential, which where we saw a big drop. So, those are always a year away. So, that's why you see in 12 and 13, our tax capacity rate jumped back up again, and that's just because our values went down. And when your values go down, you don't have as much tax base to spread your levies and expenses against, so it makes your rate go up. But the good news is, looking at this year, our 3% levy reduction, combined with our main, well, our two TIF districts that we have remaining, which they're basically the whole industrial park, are coming, are expiring this year. So, those will go back on to the tax, general tax rolls next year, which helps with our total values. So, combine that with our levy decrease, and then, also, we've seen new construction value coming on. I think you can probably account for a little less than half of our value change with our new construction that we've seen over the last few years, and that hopefully should continue now going forward. So, every time that we can keep the levy flat or lower it, and also, see new construction come onboard, we're going to see, hopefully, that tax capacity rate continue to drop. I don't see the valuations decreasing anymore. I think the county's done their catch-up. They're pretty stable now. So, I would think with the way we've been moving forward with our levies, and then, also, with the growth we've seen, that we should continue to see that rate drop in the future years. Just the summaries, just a quick comparison. Basically, no, all the increases are really based on personnel costs for the most part. I mean, we have some, you know, general operational expense costs. You know, utility rates go up, things like that go up. But there's really no major operational changes from last year to this year. The special revenue funds are basically the same way, not really any major changes anywhere. You'll see in the middle there, that TIF 24 and 25, or 44, 45, I should say, the big difference is just because they don't, they won't exist next year, so we won't have any expenditures coming out of those. That's really the only big change there. And then, you'll see our debt funds at the bottom. You know, the major issues are as we, we'll see some of our costs drop, which is what they do as the bonds get older. Then, we also have some new bonds that we added on. So, we have a few refunding bonds, things like that. So, we didn't actually have the expense the year before, but now, we'll have the expense this year because we did some refundings. But for the most part, if you, if you remember back, here, you can look, our debt levy has remained fairly flat. I mean, our goal has always been to sort of add debt as other debt rolls off and kind of keep that at a fairly flat rate. And, you know, we've, we've done that for the most part. We obviously had projects in 11 and 13 that jumped that up, but then, we had other ones that we knew were going to roll off in 14 to get that back down to where it was before we started our, kind of, every two-year reconstruct project. So, we kind of planned that out with those reconstructs, that, yeah, we knew we'd see our levy increase for a few years, but then, as debt rolled off, that would balance itself out again. So, we continue, we would hope to see that moving forward when we do our 15 project and our 17 project. Well, they'll obviously bump the levy up a little bit, but then, we'll see other ones roll off, and it'll, it should stay fairly consistent. So, capital project funds, you know, we don't, the big difference, obviously, in the street fund is we don't have a reconstruct project planned for this year. That'll jump back up for 15 when we have another reconstruct. Fire department had some big equipment purchases in 13, and they're not planning any equipment purchases in 14, so that's a big change there. Otherwise, for the most part, you're going to see, probably, the increases are just that we've really held those capital funds fairly steady for a number of years as we've tried to keep the levies low. But now that we've got a little more room in our levy, we are increasing those purchases that we've put off over the last three, four years. And those are all planned, and like we talked about always, any purchase that we have in the, in the capital plan or the financial management plan, we'll come back to the council for approval first. So, it's in the plan, but we won't actually do it until the council approves it. So, we always review them first. And then, the enterprise funds, you know, for the most part, the expenses are staying fairly, fairly consistent where they've been in the past. General fund revenue, you know, basically, we have a number of sources where we get our revenue from. Taxes make up the majority of it at 43%. Local government at 21%, and then, luckily for us, Invenergy really helps at 18%. And then, after that, really, the last two are, I keep enterprise fund transfers in there just because we used to do that in the past, where we would take money from our enterprise funds, like our ambulance, and transfer it to the general fund to help pay for operations. So, we don't do that anymore because what it does then is put our enterprise funds in trouble. You know, the ambulance fund, when it stopped having such large revenues, dropped significantly because we were still transferring a large amount of money out of that fund to help subsidize the general fund. So, it's not a good practice to cross funds that way. And so, I keep it in there just to remind us that we're not doing it anymore. It's not a good idea to do it. And I also mentioned the ambulance because if they ever need money, we probably owe them transfers back to help out. This one's impossible to read, but it did get emailed to you, so hopefully, that helps. That's even worse than I, than it was, uh... But basically, it just shows the tax impacts, and from what I can sort of read, you can see on the left is what it was, maybe you can see it even better, but on the left, what it was is the 2013, what people would pay in taxes based on whatever value of either commercial, residential business they have. And then, on the right side, it'll show a 2014, what they'd be paying for that same one. And because of our tax levy decrease, you're going to see that they're all lower. So, that they are a lower amount. So, again, on the city portion of people's taxes, they should see a decrease. All things remain the same as far as like the value of their property, those sort of things. They should be seeing a decrease in the city portion of taxes because we decreased our levy by 3%. Now, the overall taxes, you know, the county comes into play, what they decide to do, the school, any sort of referendums that the schools had on there, those all play into the overall tax bill. But when we look at the city portion alone, considering that your property value remains the same, you should see that go down 3% next year from what you paid in 2013. So, the email showed that much better. It's there. So, really, with that, that's kind of where we're at. One thing that we do have to do this year is that when the state passed the statute that exempts cities from sales tax, we do have to announce at our public meeting how much we think we're going to save in sales tax next year. We assume that we could save anywhere between 30 and 40,000. It's hard to estimate because it just depends on how much you spend that year. We looked back at 2012 and used that as a, as a way to kind of gauge what we think we'd spend. We factored in 20,000 into the budget because we're always a little wary with these things when the law gets passed because we were told one thing, and quite often, when it gets implemented, we find out that it's not quite as good as they said it was. So, we didn't want to save. We're going to put the whole 30, 40,000 into the budget of savings, and then, we find out we only get 20, and then, we're trying to come up with 20. So, we budgeted 20 in savings. We're sure hoping we actually get 30 to 40 in savings. And if we do, then we'll know better for 15, and we'll budget it, you know, to match a full year of it. But until we have a full year of actually seeing how the sales tax exemption works, we want to be very careful with it. So, that's what we're saving. That meets the statutory requirement for that. So, we'll see. Other than that, you know, I think we've discussed probably most of the details at the, at the work session. It's a, you know, it's a budget that's going to keep everything going the way it is with some new services in there. As I discussed, we've got a few one-time costs in there even that we're factoring, but overall, we're still looking at that 3% decrease in the levy for next year. So, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Aaron?
I know I've asked you this, Aaron. Regarding our whack and sack charges, that was not fact, and no revenue from that was factored into that.
Nope. That was, and Rebecca, she did leave, but that was one of the things I would talk about with her, too, is that we did tell her that, you know, we don't want to rely, when you look at past in our financial management plan, we have sack and whack revenue as, you know, a moneymaker sort of deal. And I've told her, we want to remove that off. That we actually don't have anything budgeted in there at all. When, like, when we take a look at utility rates and things next year, we don't have any sack and whack in there. Because, one, it may not happen. I mean, we had, the problem we ran into in the past is we had these huge growth projections that we were using, and, you know, 20 houses didn't show up, and they weren't paying, you know, $100,000 in access charges and things. So, we removed them completely, but also, because I know that we've had so many discussions about exempting it or rebates and things like that, that it was just easier to not include those numbers in there. And if we get them, that's great. If we don't, you know, I would rather see somebody build a house and we get the taxes and the people living here and those sort of things.
And that's what I want. I know we're not going to do that tonight, but maybe at our next meeting or something like that, we can discuss eliminating it or reducing it to just whatever administrative cost we have.
I think that would be, I think that would be just fine. I mean, our biggest thing is encouraging growth. I mean, we want to see people build, no matter what it is.
And I want to encourage growth so that we can have these water and sewer bills not go up quite as much if we get more houses built.
We'll figure out what kind of, what the base we think it should be, and then, we can bring it to Public Works even next, next meeting, and then, bring it back to the council. And we, well, Public Works meets the day of, I'll bring it back by maybe next council meeting so we can discuss it. So, that way, we can, when we set our rates at the first meeting in January, we can include them in there. Then, it's out of the way. So, yeah, I can do that.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
I want to leave you guys in the dark.
If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the resolution to approve the 2014 annual budget at 3% levy reduction.
So moved.
A motion by Bill?
Second.
Second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Harris. That moves us on to item 10. Reports, Mr. Maroney?
No, sir. Thank you.
Chief?
Other than, once again, today, we had some wintry weather. Fortunately, we have not had to do a toll for plowing yet, but it will be here. I just want to remind all the people that are watching, when there's enough snow, you know, the streets are going to have to be plowed, and as such, we're going to unfortunately have to ticket and tow vehicles. Please keep your cars off the streets when those situations develop. And we can't say specifically it's so many inches because one inch of heavy wet snow, followed by freezing rain or freezing weather, Public Works is going to want to get that off before it turns into, you know, big ice pack. Likewise, 10 inches of Fluffy's powder is still going to have to get cleared. So, we can't say definitively one way or the other when, but just pay attention to the weather and don't be on the streets till you know for sure. That's all I have.
Hey, Jeff, thank Mr. Harris for me, too. He probably should have been recognized in that situation, too, for doing a good job following up and doing his part of it.
He probably would have, but he left us. So, but he did, he did get acknowledged out of that incident directly at the time. But I will pass on, on your thoughts.
Nothing.
Nothing. The Public Works, we met this afternoon. The main item of discussion was what we did tonight regarding the pool referendum. Also, coming down the pike here, I'm not sure when, SCH will be bringing forward a proposal to look at our alleys and what we can do, probably in conjunction with future infrastructure projects, including alleys, to get those done properly over time so we can eliminate a lot of the issues we have with snow plowing, garbage trucks, water running into people's garages, that kind of thing. That's it.
Very good point, Bill, because it seems like we do these street projects and we forget about the alleys, and then, projects are done, and all of a sudden, the alleys are low and high, and water's running to them and going down.
And we're spending extra money on patching and...
Yeah. No, I think it's a good thing to look at that. Thank you.
Leroy?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Just like to say, thanks to all the kids that came and listened to the mayor read to them the other night. And it was a good time, and hopefully, everybody enjoyed the parade. And other than that, I have nothing. So, at this point, we'll adjourn.